Call a meeting of order. We begin with a pledge to the flag.
The pledge, please, is to the flag. The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad that you could join us this evening. A few announcements that most of you probably already know. Agendas are available on the back of room if you come in the door, if you did not at that point. Township records all of its board of supervisors meetings and they're posted on the township website. Written minutes will also be posted on the website after they're approved by the board. An individual here has the right to record these proceedings, but you must announce your intent to do so at this time. There'll be two opportunities for public comment. There's a policy attached to your agenda. After being recognized by the chair, if you would step forward to the microphone in front of the board, state your name and address until you press the board. With that, we'll do self-introductions of the board.
Dave Rose.
Yes, sir.
Art Rutledge.
Paul Solomon.
Jeff Ronald.
And then to my left is our township manager, Tom Ziegler, our solicitor, Jim Buck, and our recording secretary, Wendy Graham. And with that, we will move into the agenda, which you probably have in front of you. And first, we'll give the approval of the minutes from our July meeting.
I'd make a motion to approve the July, all these minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any questions?
Excuse me, I did a question. We were agreed about our last meeting. We made a motion to the effect that we would consider a proposal by the developer to relocate El Dado at Scandon. And I think what we should do, I might make a motion after, to this effect, that is if we do take a look at our official map and regard that El Dado at Scandon, if we look at any and all of the terraces, including the one through the park, just to make sure that you aren't missing something, and also the terrace through our topsy residence and anybody else involved.
So you're still in support of doing something with El Dado at Scandon?
Yes.
But you want to look at whether the park or through the trees near the house would be messed up?
Yeah, just, and we don't have a lot of money, just a quick take a look at it. That's the...
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Does anyone have any ideas how to make that there, how to do that study?
I would say probably want to bring that up for further discussion, I would say under either supervisor comments or old business.
No count.
Yeah, it's not really...
Yeah, it's not a correction.
Well, it was done in Nebraska in 1923, and that's still the going case of, yeah.
We're going to check that legal.
I know, mate.
You have comments for the minutes?
Yeah, do make your initial comments. I'm looking off the record, sorry. Oh, we get, I want to make a motion now, but I think someone raised an issue, I live in the, live at home, and they walk in the middle of Park lot, and they suggested that we need to do more weeding over there. I'm not sure that's the case. I didn't check that out, but I did do that, and I'll have maybe their members be involved with weeding as long as we're really supervising. So I'll bring that up under supervisor comments. I'm just giving you something to think about at the end of it.
And the other comments will begin.
You want to, you sound passionate, that's all I have.
All right. And the other comments or questions? Go ahead. This is a vote to approve the minutes.
Aye.
Aye. Five votes to be affirmative. The minutes are approved. We'll move on to the treasuries report. I'll make a motion to approve the treasuries report for all of this point.
I'll second it.
I think just to note, Todd, I think you have one correction on the expensive description for the Hopeville Township for your person says only the work life, but I think that's actually what we moved on from the bridge forever.
That's correct.
So it's just, the description was just carried down from the bottom of it. Any other questions or comments on the treasuries report?
We're in expensive life.
Yeah. And I guess we're doing a lot of paving. We got about $70,000 for asphalt, so should be a lot of new roads or something there.
I have a question about the Philip Farm, the custom homes.
Thank you.
He had like eight items on his, on his treasuries report. What I talked about that yesterday?
Yeah, that's for the two new homes on Sykesland Road, the Rodeck properties.
Okay, you mentioned that, but I want to make sure everybody understands it.
Yeah, it's actually, the reason there's multiple lines, you know, we have the zoning permit fee and the building through official fees, so there's multiple fees with different line items, so that's why.
You mentioned that, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we're all, everybody understands, but that's all. It's not a very, you know, the line item. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Buck.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative to approve the treasuries report. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone there who would like to address the board at this time? Come on up.
Good evening. Chad Myers, 101-820-9-RHO, New Freon. Just let's take a couple of minutes. I sent Todd some pictures.
I can look that are required.
My residence is approximately three miles down, three eighths of a mile downstream from the bridge that's out on Lion Ridge, I believe. We refer to it as the North Ridge. I just want to give the board a little perspective as to what kind of water we're dealing with last year for that.
Come on, boy, you're...
Sure. Okay, so this is just this past week?
This photo is taken Saturday morning, August 31st of 2019. Just to kind of set the stage a little bit. So I'm standing on top of a patio that's on top of our garage, looking downstream, basically. Lion Ridge is right here. Our driveway comes across our bridge, our private bridge is right here. Creek Flies back here. It's probably six to eight feet wide there, five to six inches deep. This wagon shed's a good reference point. It's about seven to five feet from the bridge, and then there's a pond in behind it. So that was August 31st, 2018.
You took it the right way.
Oh, you went the wrong way, Todd. Sports, I was building up to this.
There, I'll do it there. How's that?
That, one more. So this was, this was at 4:56 PM, 4:56 PM on August 31st, 2018. I was about capacity in the bridge, start was spilt across the driveway and yard. Thirty-seven minutes later, we look like this.
Like that?
Yeah, like that. The bridge is actually out of view in this photo. It was all the way to the wagon shed, there was about two and a half to three feet of water against the wagon shed, water wrapped the whole way around the wagon shed, back there, and as you can see, the water went literally from the ridge all the way across the pond that's behind the wagon shed. And that was, that was about the peak of it.
That was about what?
That was about the peak of the amount of water. Here you can see, it's over top of my bridge, Lion Ridge right there, and it had receded just a little bit at this point because it actually had made it out on Lion Ridge. I could see water on there, and it's probably still two and a half feet deep at that point. That was right around six feet.
Was that a hundred or two hundred years ago? What was that considered?
I thought Stan had said twenty-five, but, correct me if I'm wrong.
Depends on where you were. The gradient in the county went from four inches in four hours to ten to twelve inches in four hours. So it was a thousand-year rain in some places and twenty-five in other.
How did this compare to what you saw when the bridges were washed out a year ago?
This is the evening, this is the evening bridge washed out.
Oh, okay.
It was the end of July when it washed out the first time.
I'm sorry, I thought these were all from the big storm we had in my two gold recovery period.
No, these were all from when the bridge washed out, August 31st of 2018.
How often do you get any flooding at all, over the years?
We've been there three years. We got the two last year, the end of July event where it just made it up to the wagon shed and then this event.
Did your, did your bridge withstand it?
It did. It washed out eighteen inches deep behind it on the outside, but it survived.
So you have a big angle upstream?
No, it's pretty much at a ninety-degree angle. It was, it existed when we bought the property, and it's still there fortunately. Those were poured, they were formed concrete abutments, rather significant size, so, but that just, I just want to give you a little...
First house to hire, how?
Yes, the house is probably, you can't see it, but you're actually looking down the driveway. The house is probably fifteen feet higher than the proof, so the house is not a problem. But...
I was going to say, this gives you a little better understanding why the creek ass box is twenty-one wide by eight feet high is more important than a sixteen-foot wide by four foot high.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, because that, probably from where the creek bed is over here, is approximately five to six feet of water high, higher than normal. Thank you.
You have one question. Would you guess this water is coming more or less equally off all upstream properties, or there's some properties which contributed because of their management, a lot more runoff?
In my unprofessional opinion, the area immediately south of me, or upstream of me, is mostly wood, wood. So I don't believe there's a lot of runoff there. Once you get beyond Heen Ridge, a lot of those properties are developed and I'm sure experienced with the runoff.
And do you feel managed the water that comes off their properties? In fact, some of them hasten the water, they want to get rid of it. I mean, I'm not trying to fight it, I think that's true.
I'm not laughing that it's funny, but I hear what you're saying. I experienced it.
Twelve foot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I also wish to address the board at this time. All right, we will move on the agenda, and I guess the next item, Todd, we'll cover you, is the EDU auction.
Yeah, we, the solicitor prepared an invitation to bid, which was advertised. We also placed on the township website the invitation, as well as the bid forms. Closing deadline for bids was 4:00 PM today. We received one bid for one EDU at $8,000, and that's for 883 East, I think that's the number, 883 East Callup. Where if you're on Tom coming from Main Street, Shrewsbury to go under 83, it's the first commercial building, we'll get right there. They currently have three EDUs, I understand through conversation, they've been thinking about buying a fourth one just because of some possible changes in production, so they just want to make sure they had, were concerned with that.
That's a good deal, sir.
So that is the only bid that was received.
And I appreciate the fact, you sent out notices that people you thought might be interested, particularly interested?
Correct. We sent out letters to, I believe it was 27?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, 27 property orders in the exit four area, mostly.
That was always the last, last, so...
I made them aware if they were available.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
So we're looking for a motion to go ahead and execute the sale of that one EDU?
Yeah, if I may add, in the direction of the board, the ad and the invitation did indicate that the minimum bid, starting bid, was $8,000.
Right. And for those of you who are aware, $8,000 is what we've been selling them for in the past year or two or three, so. I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second and a discussion. Your vote?
Aye.
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 Opposed.
Four votes to the affirmative, one opposed, the motion passes. Under ordinance and resolutions, Todd, you, we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, this is, there were some changes made in state law, and that's related to this old retirement trust system, which is the town's pension administration. They are just updating all the plans to meet those state guidelines. It doesn't change benefits or retirement ages or anything to that effect, it's just changes the language to meet state law.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-05. In a second, a motion in a second and a discussion. Mr. Buck?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, the motion passes. Looking at subdivision and land development, and Todd, I think the first is just a final subdivision plan?
Yes. This is a subdivision, if you recall, this is part of Yates Farm. All the building lots are in Shrewsbury Borough. The, as you know, Lot 55A and then Lot 55. 55A is partially in the borough, and that's a housing lot. If you recall, the back one is going to be a Wild Lake Nature Preserve, also is going to hold the detention basins for the Exer Farm subdivision. The, if you recall, let me see if I can get it here. As you recall, in order to meet the road frontage requirement, the original subdivision plan showed this twenty-five-foot-wide piece of ground, part of this parcel. Developer is, and I'll show that on the next slide here, is wanting to subdivide this parcel into two lots, but in order to do that, the road frontage, this needs to be turned into part of this parcel and become right across that lot, which I think I can show you a little better on the next slide. Here, yeah. So this was the original parcel, and now looking to subdivide that into two building lots. Here's the roadway leading back to the nature area that's part of the HOA to allow access and so forth. This has been the Shrewsbury Borough, it's been through the township staff as well as planning commission. Both companies recommended approval, provided all the conditions on November 28th, 2018, CS Davidson review letter are met. And one thing that is critical, in order to meet that road frontage for this back lot, this will be paved and landscaped and so forth as it was under the original plan. So it's not just a grass red, but it's actual paved roadway back to that.
So they want to cut forty in half?
Correct.
And then on the side, make a drive back so you can get to the preserve area?
Correct, and that driving area was always there, okay?
Okay.
This area here, but this was actually a part of this main parcel back here, the preserve area. What they're doing is they're going to change that property line and bring that across here, and make this now instead of a separate piece of property, become part of this new lot, but by...
And they're basically cutting forty in half, well, straight across.
Correct, yeah, this is, if you look, this was the original forty.
Okay.
Yeah, now it's two lots.
Now, that is all in the borough, correct?
The building lots, correct.
But is that, what part of that access road is that going to be in the township? Is that what we're doing?
Well, the reason we're involved is because this piece here was originally part, this line did not exist, this property line. It was part of this parcel. It's now a property line coming across here. This is now an easement, permanent easement, which will be improved to allow access back to the nature preserve for maintenance of the area.
Which is, I'm sure.
Yeah, so that's why we're involved.
How wide is that going to be now, Todd?
Pardon?
How wide?
Twenty-five feet.
Is that, is that the actual pavement?
That's, that's...
No, that's the right... How wide is the pavement?
Sixteen?
Probably sixteen, if you're scaling it all. There's fourteen acres in the nature preserve, this is the township, is that right?
I think it's more around ten or twelve, ten, eleven?
Twelve.
Looks like 11.95.
Thirteen?
I was saying opposing numbers now.
So about twelve acres.
And there's no access to nature if you want, just this is the only access.
This is the only access, correct.
And to anybody out there, this is, this is going to be a wild lake area, an apartment area here, and even the bases are going to serve as some water management, and also going to serve as wild lake areas, so.
Looked like the majority from a review, probably some of things on the letter of fulfillment, but just to be safe, I'll go out and make a motion that we approve this with the condition that all the conditions of the November 28th, CS Davidson letter are part met.
I'll second that.
Just a question, what happens with the wild lake area? Is it going to be mowed periodically, or is it going to be allowed to overgrown, open into forest?
I don't recall the details, but there is a written plan. There's a, there's a maintenance program. So once a year it takes mowed, keep trees, because how many days is it supposed to be a meadow, not a living area? So it's mowed once a year, it has to be maintained, keep weeds out, things like, so it's our original development plan for that property specified, that whole maintenance program.
It looks like, I mean, the developer hired a very competent, one understand environmental specimens of, a design specialist, that makes specific plans and good planning and all that sort of, looks pretty good in the stump, right? Everything's there to make it a very attractive area. It's a meadow maintenance, and I'll be able to ask our supervisor with it.
So we have a motion.
I said...
Motion, shut it. Any further discussion? Your vote?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, motion is approved. We have a bond reduction request.
Yeah, this is for Hamilton's Overlook on Campbell Road. They're asking for a reduction, because the current bond is 3.4 million, they're asking for a reduction of 665,000. All the details are attached, but we're asked that the board table this until next month. Our engineer, Jeff Schuh, is aware of it. He has not gotten out yet to do the final inspection, verify the numbers. One of the issues that I think we need to address, and this is the top soil that they removed off-site, and to my recollection, I had asked them when they were going to bring it back and how much, and I've never received any response, so I think that needs to be addressed to this reduction request.
What happens with all the pressure testing and such that the borough, do we get results from that?
We do not, they're actually, I emailed them, they actually are going to be doing that next week, beginning on Monday.
But none of our bonding?
Yeah, I don't, even if, even if, even if that hadn't been completed, I don't think that we can make our decision based on new freedom, because they're holding the bonding for that. No, that's not part of their bond.
So that's between them and the group.
Right.
How much topsoil was it, was it moved? How many chocolates?
I know there was, I don't know an exact number, because again, as you know, we were made aware by a phone call by a resident and one of the southern regional police officers because of all the trucks lined up on Campbell Road and the flaggers, but it was relatively, I don't think they were at it more than about an hour or so, so I don't know an exact number of trucks.
We've had problems in the past, everybody, people come in and develop a site, they call the topsoil off and sell it. So in the back, in most cases, all of it, some get maybe not all of it, and then they get back, maybe they get kind of fashion topsoil in a lot of cases, bring that in, and they got nine inches on that, and it's eighteen inches of topsoil. So people say, why do they have all these regulations? Every regulation we have is because some person, developer or company, didn't do what they should have done, just morally, they should, they should have done better. I'm getting more and more impatient. Do things right, it must, because someplace else will prevail, and so I feel bad.
All right, on this one, did we need a vote?
I don't, I don't, the tissue is... Consensus table.
Is Jeff Schuh going to throw all these numbers?
Yes, yeah, they actually need to go out and do an inspection of the top one.
All right, I see a consensus, I will look at the table, that, so Jeff, it's done. We have a bond release request.
Yeah, this is the eighteen-month maintenance bond, mostly for landscaping at the Colicton Water, select them, the former Woodward Drive and Constitution Avenue. The letter of credit expires October 2nd. Again, engineer Jeff Schuh is going to go out and do a final inspection, so what I'd ask the board to do on this one is if you would approve the request, condition on final inspection approval by engineer Myers. Again, my visual, I didn't have the plan out, but everything looks to be pretty well over, so I don't expect really anything significant that they'll all...
They've done the, in landscaping, they've done the best job that any developer so far.
I asked you earlier, it's done this in like eighteen months.
John, fine. What happened in the summer?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bond release with the stipulation that it's dependent upon Jeff, or CS Davidson verifying that everything has been completed.
Second.
Motion, motion in two seconds. Any other comments? Your vote?
Aye.
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 Five, five comments to be affirmed, so the next...
I have a question. No, that firm is responsible, even though the eighteen months has elapsed, for maintaining what they have there.
Correct, yeah, for some reason, you know, half the hillside got blanked out, they still have to follow that approved plan.
And we have a motion to...
And the problem is, I won't say the problem, the issue would be is if they chose not to address it, we don't have the bond to go back on for us to do it ourselves.
What do we do?
But they're still responsible for meeting the plan requirements.
What can we do if they don't? I don't think they will, but if they do...
You have to contact your friendly attorney.
Well stated.
You're on it, try to relax.
You did a commercial tonight, didn't you?
And you can take appropriate action, is that the same?
At your direction. Thank you.
All right, we have the managers' report, and Todd, anything you want to emphasize?
And I don't really have much to talk about, I'm just going to bring up the date that we, I have a call, as I said, my notice to the company, I forget the name of it, Sisquian Fire Equipment, for Hart Sign, for the two AED units, one for here and one for the maintenance building. Total cost of that appears to be $2,500 for both of them.
For both?
If you recall, the board approved up to $3,000.
The AEDs themselves, the sign?
Yeah, the Hart Sign.
Just a sign?
Hart, Hart Sign.
Right.
Yeah, the two AEDs.
The units.
For two units, it's a total.
Okay, okay, I wasn't clear if you were talking about Hart Sign was the unit, or you were talking about the sign that went with the unit?
No, no, no.
This is being turned away by the knowledge of the sign.
Hart Sign is the main recorders.
I'm waiting now.
The other information I provided you, not that we need to take any action tonight, you may want to digest or think about it, I don't know, but yeah, I put in my report that was contacted by a former board member, planning commission member, regarding a resolution from back in 2002 about creating a conservation fund, which should be used towards educating, for land preservation, as far as actual land preservation. It was a resolution, yes. And also purchasing, buying EDUs, I didn't think EDUs. Um, and also purchasing, buying E D U's, I didn't think E D U's. T D Rs into a T D R bank. Um, so that's, that's for your information at this point in time.
My resolution is still in this.
Still in that, it is, it has been rescinded, but I'm aware of it, I think so.
Well, if there's anybody, the final section, obviously, if they think they have too much money, and one of those kinds of wild thing, maybe you could put that in a little blurb in the newsletter. Four lines, I think.
You said three, that's all I have written down.
Are they, yes. There you go.
There are options for municipalities that want to do things like that, and our partners that are available, and some of our land trust organizations in the county, the Farm and Natural Lands Trust. They work with other municipalities, I believe they may have spoken with TruStre County at one time, about whether or not you want to set up a T D R program, or a township-based preservation program. If you have interest in pursuing that, there are groups that you can work with.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing is, the, the maintenance assessment report, you should have that full report from the architect at this month. Mike, Art and I met today, and we think we finalized a list of candidates to interview for the open maintenance position. Looks like we're gonna be interviewing a week of September sixteenth, so we should have a candidate for the board at the October meeting. And last thing, I just wanted to mention, we don't have a specific date at this point in time, but I've been notified that it looks like mid-October is when the traffic signal at the trail in Campbell Road will go live, as soon as I know exactly.
What kind of turns are we talking about there, it's not all off the grid, but here, you have several lights in east direction. They have a right-hand turn coming out of Campbell Road.
No, I think that's just a single.
Single red, red yellow there.
Do they have any turn lanes that I recall are on the trail? To, to turn left, coming north on the trail, left on the Campbell, and if you're going south, turn left into Southern Hardwood Town.
Will they have a, a left-hand turn coming north?
Yes.
No bill on separate light?
I'm not sure about the light sequence guy, it's been a long time since.
It's probably, it's probably earlier.
Yeah.
Right, so that's it.
So, I know exactly, I want you to know, otherwise that's all I have to say.
I have something.
Excuse me.
I have nothing.
No, I'm, I'm finished.
Does a question on the.
Yeah, a question.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
I think we're all aware of, we have an eighteen-month period in which landscaping and so, it has to be replaced, if it dies or whatever. And then, after that, we don't have anything. In fact, they can, they can let all their plants die, all their street teams die, and we don't have a program to follow up on it. It's always worth it on the project, make sure that, this is a very important matter, because we've got all the trouble, and they go all the trouble to plant all these shrubs and trees, and so, and so on. And we don't follow up with it over the years, there's one here, two there, we end up with a very distorted landscape. So you and I came out of the, the match ex office, so months ago, we looked, there was a circle where a tree had been, so you got two trees far apart, nothing in the middle. So, it's critical we do this, we deal with enthusiasm, it's not excitement, but, and we do it on a regular annual program as far as time. And I don't wanna come to these after I'm through as a supervisor, okay, but if anything will make it for me, it'll be that. I'm done.
You may need a part-time job.
We're done.
We accept your threat.
It's other way, that's more hard. And this is, it was, it's a mine, I'm not, this is partly hard.
All right, we always give our solicitor the opportunity, if he would like to add anything.
No, thank you, thank you. One of these months, we're gonna get a solicitor to.
I was fascinated by what I saw in this.
Yeah.
Right now, though.
Very good. Are there any questions on the engineer's report?
I have a big question, what is our solicitor?
What kind of engineer?
If anybody gives us a report, he saves us a lot of money, and he does, he keeps us all informed, so I'm, I'm not this one at all, but I can tell.
Oh, no, no, he is a wonderful solicitor, and I did not mean to infer anything, well, my previous comment.
I liked the manager giving the opportunity, you guys should do our audio, that's all.
I don't feel shorted at all.
Uh, we do, uh, it's not like we don't talk in between.
Yeah, right.
Any questions on the engineer's report?
You know, Tim's, or, Tim's related.
Yeah, I've got anything affirmative. Um, I do have an engineer's report library, if you want to talk about that now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, of course, everyone from the board, I think probably everyone in the audience was here last month, when we talked about library, and the, the two estimates that we received in North Hopewell, one for pre-cast concrete box, you know, with the twenty-one by eight-foot opening, and then the GRS, which is the stacked block bridge, usually a timber bridge decking, which was, I think, sixteen by four opening. Of course, we had a lot of questions, I won't say a lot, we had several questions at that meeting, asked for some clarification, asked that the GRS bridge be priced to meet the minimum twenty-one feet by eight feet, and that twenty-one feet is based off of the calculations by New York County Conservation District, who came out and determined that the minimum full bank width is twenty-one feet, so the work was short wide, the proposal came through for only sixteen foot wide on the GRS bridge. Uh, with that said, an email was sent to North Hopewell Township. We were, Art was contacted, I believe, once or twice by the chairman, as I was, they, and then emails and telephone calls. Make a long story short, we received word from North Hopewell, the board chair, that we are to proceed to take the lead on the project. So, Jeff Schuh, I anticipate by the October meeting, is going to have more detailed budget, along with the timetable, and so.
For the pre-cast.
For the pre-cast box.
It's unfortunate that it took us a year just to get to the point of, who's driving the bus?
And frankly, and I've had this conversation with Art, what I find most frustrating is that we had an emergency permit that that bridge could be opened today.
And they drove it free.
And, and they're, frankly, their engineer stepped in and said, no, we'll take care of it, and then realized they couldn't, and the permit expired, and that's, that's unfortunate for a lot of people, especially those that live in that area and use that road.
Or would like to use that road, that's the case maybe.
Yeah, yeah. But, the important thing is, I, you know, Art, correctly, if I'm wrong, but I, I, I see a desire from the North Hopewell Township Board Supervisors to work with TruStre Township, and I think their goal is to, to work with us and to get that road open as, as soon as possible.
Certainly from their chair.
Yes.
That's certainly been.
He's.
The message over and over again. And, and that's why they've just threw their hands up and said, it's just too slow, we don't hear you guys, if you can drive it, then drive it. And we can only drive the car, because we're not as high as an expert in our, in the engineering group on that bridge, but we think the car is a more substantial way.
We don't wanna do this again.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So that's where we're at.
So Jeff, does the most have something to us next month?
Yeah, he'll definitely have something to you, I'm hoping he gets to it before, but hopefully we'll get, I'll get it to you out before the October meeting, so you can look at it.
Hopefully that will be enough information to proceed.
Yeah, I think at that point in time, at the October meeting, if all the board's comfortable, all your questions are answered, we will then send that on to North Hopewell as well at the same time.
And mutually, you know, go forward.
When, when is their meeting? Um, I think it's.
First Tuesday of the month.
First Tuesday.
If there's a, yes, for the.
So, I thought that Jeff, if we get it in advance, you know, I would always send out emails and board has any questions. Yeah, I don't wanna have to wait till November just to have them look at it, if, if we're all in agreement, because that's another month wasted. So if, if we can do something with that ahead of time, preliminarily, and have them act on it, so we can kind of finalize it the day after. Um, that would be better. Maintenance report?
Any questions on maintenance report?
So, I, I didn't mean to steer you under there, Art, I was just.
That worked.
Okay.
We're all gonna see that. Questions?
Clear report. I love this chart.
Yeah, I do too.
I have a comment. I wish they had gotten a bottle for last road line before school started. But I'm, I'm, Mike was gonna try, so if you do, but he goes as fast as the contractor, if anybody asks for.
Yeah, we typically use the E Campbell, so Mike and I just talked about that, these Wednesday, yesterday.
Tom, Tom, call him, Tom, one of the board members was enraged.
I will tell him.
Our, so did our danger advisor, the back of the.
I'll let him watch the video.
That's what I'm about to do. Just get in. I have to get in, okay.
Okay, any questions on the zoning officer, government enforcement, first supervisor's report? They all do a pretty good job of keeping support. We should organize a briefing.
We get your reputation. Any updates from the things that were happening in August? It's pretty soon thereafter.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I usually finalize that on Friday morning, that the packets are delivered.
All right, any, we give, stand the same opportunity that we give to the solicitor, because I think he wants to report.
Not this one, thank you.
Okay. Any questions on the planning commission, zoning hearing report? All right, we arrived at the opportunity for supervisors' comments.
I, I need to back up, just.
Go ahead.
A brief moment, but we still haven't heard anything from the special hearing master? We have not. Is, is, is he? Worried about three weeks. Is he in good health? That's what I understand. So we need to check.
Yeah, is he still alive?
Well, I, I didn't wanna quite go that far, but I mean.
I'm not shy.
Sort of make sure he's not in the hospital or anything, or. I think I recall solicitor Buck making the comment once that he's waited as long as two years. All right, then, then we will continue to wait.
Always does it being carries by that?
No. But, I've just.
Or notified.
Yes, thank you.
Really notified.
All right, supervisors' comments, we note that Todd and I did meet on August the eighth, and we did some review of potential fire tax reallocations, so if you're ready to talk about some formulas that we dwelt into the last time and deferred to this budget period, so we'll, I think we'll, we'll have some information that we can talk about as we get into the budget. And I did take part in the PSAT webinar on turning township assets into recreational offerings, but it was, it was pretty well done, but it was geared to large municipalities and very large projects, huge buildings with libraries and tubes, and, and it was presented by the architects who designed these things, so. But, you did something interesting there at all times, so comments from others?
Go ahead, is anybody?
I just, I was driving this morning, sort of from Walmart down across Mount Airy Pos Giant. I just like us to be mindful of, I know some of that is state road and that sort of thing, but mindful of the possibility of making that area more walkable. Um, there was a lady who was pushing a stroller, had another child by the hand, she got to the corner there, a Taco Bell, she pushed the light so she could cross towards Coach Lake, and she just about knocked the kid on the stroller out into the, driving out into the lane, and then turned around to grab the other child, and it's just kind of a mess there. And there are people who are walking in there, whether we desire that or not.
I know, area is across from Shreveport Commons into, you know, the, Messina Plaza, and people try to cross out, there's a guy standing in the median today, I guess, trying to cross, but with his cellphone, you know, in that, in that narrow median, but that whole area is not friendly. You see people trying to walk along the hillside with little dogs to try and get on there. You know, I, I think the township misses an opportunity to put law courts and things like that, and we've seen lots of this done, because highways was done, because development would pay for that. And, and, and we should be encouraging people not to have to get in the car to drive from Walmart to.
The bank.
You know, the Bank of Shemar's or wherever else is up there, but it's very dangerous to do that, and you're right, that whole intersection there, before you get to that.
I don't know if there's, is the state within, do you do, or any portion they were doing, if we could talk about some crosswalk, maybe some painting on the ground or something.
Well, the sidewalk, so there's nothing's gonna get you across.
Cause there's no sidewalk going up the hill.
It's not for that.
Yeah. Well, as far, as far as any markings for crossings on the streets, that's part of our permit. If it's required, that would be part of our signal permit.
I don't know if it's required, but it seems to be.
I, I don't look at our, our permit for that, frankly, I'd be surprised if it's not required, because it is, it has been required now at exit four, which we're, you're down at exit four. But I don't, I can check our permits, the other thing, and maybe the solicitor knows this answer, without us doing any research, but I believe there is a section in the township code, and I'll pull that section to see what it says, but I, I think the township, as with any municipality in Pennsylvania, has the authority to require the installation of sidewalks outside of a subdivision or land development. But, but I gather some information.
Then we would be paying for it?
No.
No.
We need to require the, the property area.
But the outside improvement.
That still doesn't help you get across eight fifty one.
No.
No, sure, we made part of it.
One of our problems is that our residential and commercial developments are not integrated, they're separate, separated by highways and whatever else, so it's, it's impossible to go back now and try to, maybe there's one or two that's out there, but there aren't many, try to change everything.
I don't know how far they're coming up with, we have to do one of you, a, the, either interchange, or putting a bike on you, or putting a, a walking path, I don't know how far up that comes.
So we'll have to be done with some of that, remember.
I don't.
And I think.
Yeah, I think they're resurfacing up to that, and including that intersection, but I don't think any additional improvements, why, I mean, your plane plans are.
We, yeah.
Maybe our time.
It would be.
Yeah, I'm not.
It would be nice if they would come that far.
Well, they're coming up beyond the traffic light with the road, isn't it?
Yes.
That ripple effect, is that, that's separate.
I was just gonna say, I'm not in favor of forcing businesses to put sidewalks in at this juncture, but uh, there, there would, there'd need to be more of a public outcry, for lack of a better term, if, if we were even starting to pursue something like that.
There would be a public outcry, there's been, there's often a public outcry.
Well, they would be outcry because of the costs associated with, but I'm just saying.
The first child that gets dumped out was from, into traffic.
Agree.
I mean, I, I agree with you, I'll try.
But, I mean, it's, it's such a tough area because of the, the hills and the grade, I mean, I wouldn't wanna walk up that hill. Either of the hills, either Mount Airy or going up to Messina Island.
It's surprising how much the sidewalk is used. It comes from Mount Airy up to like the Walmart.
That is a good point. I do see people on that sidewalk.
It's frequently used.
Yes.
And some of that come from the other side of Tona.
Okay.
And down. So they get their extras, that's a lot too. But I guess we need to be alert for any opportunities or anything new. Maybe something that the state does when they do 83, something that can be tied into it if they come close.
Yeah, I made a note here to pull the traffic signal. Just gather that, that attention, credit for that.
I'm sorry, any of the grant stuff that we looked at, talk about, there's some things for improvement, I feel like, but I don't know if any of that...
So you can get block grants for sidewalks, but you have to go to lower water incomes or pools.
You can get free, sure, any, traffic signal improvements.
There, there is, I just actually received an email today. I don't know exactly offhand what they all involve. It's a grant program, it's intermodal, and I, I looked that a little closer, involves traffic and pedestrian stuff, so I looked at that.
There's something that we can do to improve that area, because like I said, whether, whether the hope was to try to deter people from walking or not, and that's why we didn't do it, or it wasn't done initially, to save people.
I don't think we ever thought about it.
It was never.
It was before my time. But lots of people do walk that area, and I think we gotta make some effort to keep people safe.
This might be an overkill, but a pedestrian bridge over top of Forest Avenue would...
Were you gonna pay for it?
I am not, I'm just offering alternative suggestions. But, I mean, that's, that's a very busy intersection.
They need to do that. Now I don't want to prolong this conversation, if it was necessary. And I'm in the patient position, you know.
That's right, you, you were, yeah.
If you had these buttons you push and it, it's...
And that's what she was doing. She did try, she pushed that button that's on there right below KFC, Taco Bell, whatever it is now.
I didn't know there was a button there.
Yeah, because I was sitting in the lane watching her, and then she started walking, and like I said, she didn't dump the child out onto Forest Avenue.
There are some very dangerous streets, so we have current lanes and different, you know, even with buttons, it can still be very confusing. But, all right.
Point four.
Good points.
Thanks, man.
I think Paul had something. Did, did, weren't you gonna continue from the, from the minutes?
I do have something to say.
Okay.
I spent a lot of time on this.
So where is yours?
Where are the five minutes? Could we ask for it?
All right, at eight o'clock?
No, I said, no, is it five minutes?
That's public comment.
Well, I'm almost happy to be at.
Don't, it's five, it's five minutes. Five minutes sounds like a good number.
Well, you, you know, you're already taking thirty seconds. I figured out, I was lost five minutes all the time I've been a supervisor. I use twenty-seven. That means I, I'm a hell of a two hundred and three, I use twenty-seven, I've got a hundred and seventy-six minutes left. Just for the record.
You were saving all those other times?
To get serious.
Okay.
As far as, a couple things, housekeeping. There, there, someone came from, someone called me, said that there are no dog, no dogs in the park signs in the other park on Strawberry, Strawberry Field Road. And there's a path people take to come right into the park with their dogs at the southeast corner. And then also, they get in around the sign, so he was concerned about that. And they also said there's a lot of weeds in the park.
But are they seeing dogs? Is that, okay.
They said there's, I don't know what, something or overdue with weeds, and they went, no weeds whatsoever. Didn't know that on home and everything. But I said earlier, maybe people in new homes on our supervision could begin from time to time, and weed. Same thing with Oak Park, the Southern York County Boys Club, as, as one of their facilities, we, we let them have a street charge basically, and maybe they could help, just a thought.
Does this person come in off the Strawberry Road, you know?
Well, he, he comes in, he lives in new homes.
Oh, okay.
He comes over the bridge.
Yeah.
He tried it. Okay. Making case for my hesitation. I'll be very grateful. We opened a topic, township news, remind, this is the latest topic, September topic. And it's interesting, it, it, it's called, title is Water Rose, Rose for Public Water. And indicating here that one of the new discoveries is the PFOAs and PFOSes, ensuring a lot of products are finding a way into our water supply, public water supply and proper water supplies. And the problem is killing the other reproduction cholesterol and so, cancer and so forth. And they were concerned that, that E P A's levels may be too high. And then they go on to say that, they talk about biosolids, which is a misnomer for sewage sludge. And it's a, it's a, it is a name used by people that are involved with sewage, doesn't make it sound like it's biosolids now. Anyway, we have accepted sludge and we continue to do so in our township. This board, which there, a couple of years ago, we approved the biosolids and sewage sludge application. And prior to the years, we had a three-year battle, more or less, sewage sludge. And, and the property owner called the state attorney general's office, who enforces the Right to Farm Act, and said that biosolids is a normal agricultural practice, we cannot interfere with a normal agricultural practice. So we, we followed that for a couple of years and didn't get anywhere, so they can do the spread sludge over there. The owner go to the, the nutrient plant, pick up traffic, put twenty, one more ton, so he got paid, fifty dollars a ton. And went over and dumped it on his farm, and then came back later with a final letter, put on the most spread, and it didn't spread evenly. Some of it was frozen, so it was a real mess. So we know this biosolids contain anything and everything from chemical plants, hospitals, pharmacies, whatever. And they only test for eleven elements, nine heavy metals, and two bacteria, including E coli. So we don't know what they're putting on these farms. And they don't, like, they don't test them, they don't test the food that's they produce. So to conclude, I suggest what the board does is next time we get an application, we say we have some valid concerns. And so we're not gonna grant you a permit, and then they'll call the attorney general's office, they'll come down and try to negotiate with us. They won't, they won't give us a fine, they'll throw us in jail. And then they'll try to reach some compromise or some, whatever. And, but I think we should challenge them when they start that process, look, tell us what was in that application of biosolids or sludge. And how you, how you intend to keep it out of our food supply, out of our water supplies, so and so on. And they'll negotiate, and they won't let us say, at some point they may say, they may put the foot on safe. We're gonna bring the lawsuit yesterday, they don't, right, and prove this. But menor and biosolids or sludge are two different things. Formal menor is a, spreading is a normal agricultural practice, a good practice, but it's not, right? But biosolids is not a formal practice. It's not menor, it's different. So our areas of board, if we consider that approach, or some modified approach there, often, or something there.
Do we currently have anything that requires a term for that?
This is controlled by the...
Yeah, we, we do have some regarding biosolids and...
The consternation is involved, the state's involved, the, 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 involved, the state. County's involved. Well, one last point, this really makes the point clear, is a number of state agencies informed us that they support spreading biosolids. And why they support it, not because it's good practice, because the alternatives are to put it in the landfill, because they don't want to do it, or to incinerate it, it's very, very expensive. So the only option they considered was to dominate on our formula. And they did have a very good reason for doing that, and they did, they did the homework to begin with. What was I, was it my five minutes or?
I think it was seven. We, we started at, at fifty-five, but there was, there was some information published.
Did they, anything else?
You want some more? I don't think there's enough. No, I'm not.
Anything you would like?
No.
All right. If we're all done, we'll move on to home business, the interpretive plaque. Todd has up there.
Yeah, I was expecting someone here this evening, I haven't seen anyone. But I think the board recalls with the trail entries and so forth, they approached us and asked about putting a informational plaque, educational plaque in Haytown Park. I know their letter says about putting it along the trail and so forth, but during that meeting, I know we talked about putting it down closer to the pavilion or something, so that more people would be able to read it and we would discourage people pulling along the side of it, it's just like a trail. So anyway, as far as specifics, specific site, we agreed at that time that we would meet on site and we would all turn and agree on where to place, but basically what they're looking for is from the board as far as what you see before you, and it'll be two feet by four feet, and it would be placed in Haytown Park.
Oh, this, this is the plaque?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's gonna be somewhere in the road, you know, when somebody try to mark on the trail or read that somewhere.
It, it'll be very similar to what you see if you walk the rail trail or anything, you know, they have, or you go to the outfield.
It looks like they're gonna try to do one on the other north of here too.
Yeah, I think they're putting that up at Jacobus.
They probably go, or do the same side. But as long as we have the control over where it's positioned, because I also talked here about it would have an extended life if it could be positioned in a sheltered area. I'm not sure what they have in mind or what they mean by that, but tonight is just to approve a two by four that looks exactly like that.
It's gonna have a little...
Yeah, it does.
Color over, isn't it?
The best firing color. Yeah, they're the professional for, you walk the rail trail, you see where, it's, it's just, just like that.
They're, next to it's one of the trees they planted, wasn't it?
No.
I mean, what... Okay, one little tiny one there at the bottom. I'm not seeing a lot of the big ones.
Big ones.
There were some of the larger trees, I mean, we, we've got, putting in the new ones, we've got some different things. I'm not sure what's going on with the dog truck area. I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit.
The truck tree.
Yeah, one, but I mean, a lot of the...
There are a lot of those trees that are a hundred years old.
Yeah.
I don't see any hundred-year-old trees there. Well, this is, this is an informational plaque to tell you about the history and the dedication and what they're going for the restoration and how they've done it.
Well, why wouldn't you do that?
I, I mean, I, I like that, but I like the original.
Well, there are two pictures that show, the top and bottom, on the left show the hundred-year-old and the top.
And here.
So they're unshown.
Yeah, they, they, why, why?
I guess I had higher expectations, I'm sorry.
They put it along the trail.
That's all right, thank you.
They put it along the trail down to park, you walk every state, there's all those white lines down there. Why are they gonna put it down there?
No, that's what we're saying, because I think when we talked last time, it wouldn't be along the trail, we would put it down around fifty, in the playground, you know.
Why put it up here?
This is a suggestion.
Put it up here, we have forties up here, I think.
They wanna get us close to the beginning, I think, as, as they can.
They should be down in Riverline.
Well, the other thing is, they're good.
They're good, aren't they?
If you read this information and you wanna get the message out, Haytown Park, as far as township properties, where you're gonna reach the most people.
But again, we're not talking about location here, we're talking about...
Right.
Just approving the site.
Okay.
Some other parks a little bit closer to the other end. It's along the trail.
So what's the bottom line here?
They wanna, they're asking us to approve the signs we've seen in here.
In, in Haytown Park, but at a location that we mutually agree upon.
Haytown Park.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Your signs? We have a motion to accept.
I mean, I, I don't wanna stay, we're not allowed legally.
You mean that motion to second, or conflict? I don't like the way it flows.
Well, then you think that.
You know, you know why I had to be called, there was a motion to second, because I was thinking about the sludge. And I don't think I said this, but the sewage plants pay the, for people that hold away.
Wait a minute, where are you going?
They pay them fifty dollars a ton.
We have a motion. We got a dispense with that. We have a motion to second. I don't, I don't think we should be too critical of what their pictures and all of this. This is a volunteer, to be a bunch of people, yeah, a bunch of...
Think in one paragraph. That's two sentences. Okay. They didn't even try. I don't know.
Well, I think a lot of this, they gave a little history, that they really wanted to focus.
On the volunteers.
On what happened.
Yes, and again, I, I think the volunteer aspect is important. They're, they're trying to revive it, but I don't wanna lose sight of the historical nature. Like I said, they got two sentences in a...
So column and ask if they can print on that size smaller and increase the history of that section? Because you do have very large type compared to very small type here.
Yeah.
All right, there's a more discussion before we vote.
I'm, I'm...
Do you want us to start from the other end?
No, you can start from me, that's fine. I'm just gonna start them off on a sour note, that's fine. I don't think I've got enough votes of support, but I'm gonna try, or votes of non-support, which we refer to as opposition. I might have to ask the lawyer for a...
On favors, yeah.
Yes. All right, all right, seriously though, we've got a motion, we have a second. Shall we, nay?
Aye.
Aye.
I knew I didn't have enough.
We still have to determine where the sign's gonna go, which is a pretty...
Yes, correct.
Yes, mutually agreed upon.
I don't, I know this is a little bit unusual, but I'll be very, very determined, you know.
All right, so we're second, so we're trying very hard.
I failed to include a very important part of my presentation on sludge. I will not say anything that's like, you know.
Go ahead.
I don't think I said this, if somebody may pay you the tape at the sewage plant, fifty dollars a ton, it weighs enough to be right now, so they have a twenty-ton truck, you're making, how much you're making, every, a thousand dollars truck load. So if the Sussex Plant were fertilized, why don't you have to buy it instead of just getting it free like that? What we're getting paid for, that's, that's put them on the thing. So that shows you how flawed that whole concept is. Thank you.
We have a trash waiver request, Todd?
Yeah, this one was submitted for, by Phil Robinson from Mount Airy Bridge Sussex Place site. If you recall, that was stable until the house was actually torn down, that was actually taken down last month, so I guess the board took... taken down last month, so I guess we were to through that permanent waiver.
I'll second it.
We have a second, any questions or comments?
This big house, is that still standing?
Yes.
What's gonna do, you gonna leave it standing?
Yes.
Good. You gonna restore it?
Yes.
Great. Alright, well, thank you.
Let's vote on the trash waiver.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I vote for you for it, that's approved. Pennsylvania, House Bill 103, Todd.
Uh, yeah, I have a copy of the letter from your Councilman and Commissioner, Alicia Dow, who's the director, outlining their concerns with House Bill 103, which talks about the amendment of the infancy that allow property owners to create two non-building lots without having to go through the association process at the local level. And then we do some of the sections to talk about any specific concerns that they have. So I want to share that with the board, and if you have a position on that, or if you send any letters in opposition to it.
It just makes no sense that they could do that, to me, it basically throws out your zoning ordinances and your zoning code, and you don't even know somebody's done it, and you don't have any control over what they did or what might be done in the future, or even a knowledge of it. I don't know how to agree with it, to me.
I think there's support to submit a letter.
I think, I think the motion that we submit a letter to the appropriate officials opposing this bill.
Right. And copy, your type, anyone you think we should copy, the letter should go to the people that are opposing the bill. I'd like to ask Marjorie, has your, is that a number of rural townships? I remember this before, what's your advice, what's your opinion?
I can find you one if you'd like, it already passed the House. I think it's gonna die in the Senate, because a lot of people have said it doesn't make sense.
It passed the House?
Passed the House, yes.
What?
Yes.
Did you vote any of the numbers that are on? It's amazing, let's get through it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments?
I'll try this simple. A motion to send a letter.
A letter in opposition to the bill.
Okay.
I amend the motion, a strongly worded, well-researched letter, I can do that.
I don't always do that.
I would think that Tim has one that is the most...
Yeah, Tim said he has one, so we forward that, so we have...
I see you better.
He's got the research, yeah, so there you have it.
Alright, shall we vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. A lot of votes in favor following through, and a lot of opposing. Thompson Road in Cloverdale Island, update on traffic count.
Uh, yeah, as you recall, I think one of the last components that the board needed some information on, you know, we talked about replacing the car, or, you know, different ways of abandoning and so forth, you know, then it came up, there's a, you know, traffic, the volume of traffic and so forth, so if you recall, we had LTAP, which is the Penn Bank, come out and do a traffic count for us, and the average daily traffic count for Cloverdale is sixty-one vehicles, and Thompson Road is forty-four vehicles.
Which is a reasonable amount of traffic. I guess, you know, this has been going on for a long time, and I looked at it, and we had a property owner who came to us and requested closure. We have very few residents affected, but most of them really didn't care either way. One strongly, adjacent properties, one strongly opposes it, one strongly favors it. We had River Borough who expressed their opposition to closing, from Tony and from Stan, there was at least concern expressed that that could affect emergency operations and could affect traffic flow if there's an accident or something of that sort. It doesn't seem to me that there's any overwhelming evidence that we ought to vacate those roads. And I think it's kind of time we go on to something else and keep this from coming up in almost every meeting that we have, in my opinion, is that we just ought to, to go in, and, in my opinion, I would say we should just cease any activity. How does the rest of the board feel?
Well, I need to give a good report. I'm going to do this, as a property owner or owners, what went this farm in the agricultural preservation program here in the county in perpetuity, with no more, no more developer rights than reached part of, no more than three developers, that's it, for the whole farm, I'm going to support the request.
That doesn't answer any of the objections that I see, and I don't think we can force the property owner to do that.
We can, you may not agree with it.
Just to be just driving this on and on, I just don't see where you can make an argument that those roads should be closed, why?
I agree with your logic, but I'm just throwing this out, if that farm is ever developed, it's gonna be hundreds and hundreds of units.
Can't develop it in our township.
I know that they have.
How many units do the property have? How many units do you have in the farms?
Two hundred and fifty or so.
So they're still up there in there. Okay, that's the seat.
Well, I guess I can put it this way, just in the form of a motion, I would make a motion that we abandon any further asset toward vacating either Thompson Road or Cloverdale Island.
No pun intended, though.
No pun intended.
Abandon it.
If you, if you make such a motion, is that, if you make said motion, is that, does that go on forever? Does that mean we can never revisit it?
I don't know.
Because that doesn't seem to be the intention.
If you vacate a road, it's gone.
No, 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 that's not...
She's asking if, if we stop talking about it.
It doesn't mean it can't come up in the future, is that the question?
Yes. I mean, I tend to agree with you, I think there has, there's, we've heard a lot more opposition, unfortunately, Kevin, than we've heard support for it. I get it, I mean, I have stuff done with all my property, too, because I have the same cul-de-sac at the end that used to go through, but when the Hopewell Township, the Tru-Sbury Township decided to abandon a bunch of roads back by me, it left me landlocked. And people don't, I call that washing machines, dryers, more tires than to furnish a fleet, you know, mattresses all the time.
Having them go and ride.
It happens.
True. You know, I mean, it happens in a lot of places.
I get it, I feel...
You can't totally...
You gotta come up here and...
Yes, come on.
You know, I have people parking back there and doing stupid stuff, too, and it's hard to monitor, and so I get it, but I don't think you exactly have the support of, of the surrounding folks.
Well, the main's got a job from Chopper or discussing this property. I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I thought I heard somebody say that one of the affected people, and they're strongly opposed, but I thought they changed their position at the last meeting. Didn't the locals get up and say that they were, then my sister came home and told me that they would firmly agree with it as long as that...
What they, what they, what they were, if I understood correctly, what their desire was, that we, they had no opposition to the closing of Thompson Road, provided it occurred past their property with a turnaround on your property.
Yes.
Um, which really is, in essence, if that short section from Stone Arch up to just past their property with a turnaround, really is maintaining a private driveway, which with, with...
Well, the township goes down Stone Arch and maintains two, two houses down there, so it's, to me, that's the same, same difference. Because it dead ends down there, so...
The, the, I will just say, before my time and anyone on this board, that all took place before, you know, any of these decision makers who can't, who can't speak for, you know, actions that took place in the past.
Todd, you sent an email around Saturday, but I just wanted to make clear that I understood that, that they had withdrew their option as long as they didn't have to repair that cobbler and...
Not the cobbler that we got.
Their concern was, was beyond just repairing it, because we've made it very clear from the very beginning, we would replace, put in a brand-new cobbler, and we would pave that section of the road. But if the meeting last month, if the opportunity is online, they don't, they understood that, they were okay with that, but they don't want any maintenance of it either.
Well, but I, I think I might have brought up to Todd one time was, that the money you're gonna save, not have from the cloud and maintain all that other road, just take care of that little tiny stuff there, you're probably in money ahead.
I think we're not looking at it just because of what, one letter of opposition, but we've also had emergency people look at it, we have River Borough who doesn't work for it, there's just no, in my mind, just being, there's no prepondering evidence that it makes sense.
I brought it up to the borough because, first, because years back, when that was dirt, and I'm sure to the borough meant that they would tar and chip that road, and they promised that they were gonna vacate, promised, because they knew what it was gonna turn into, once it was more of a clean road and not a dusty, dirty road, it's gonna become a shortcut. So the engineer at the time said, well, if it's only gonna be a driveway for one person to use, he, he recommended a minimum base and a small amount of tar and chip, and so when this is never followed through with, I went to the borough and said, look, you know, if you allow that traffic back there, it's gonna crush that road, it wasn't designed for it, and you're gonna be paying out four bucks all the time. So, I looked at it as a financial thing, that they constantly worrying about the snow removal and the maintenance, just basically for me back there. And, and that's the way I, I put it forward to them, because I have the boroughments back there that when they put the bids out, in two thousand and five, Kinsey gave them a bid of over forty thousand dollars to bring that road up to specs. So there's something wrong back there that doesn't, doesn't jog with whatever road was supposed to be, whether it has to do with width, or drainage, or whatever. So, I was just looking one day that somebody's gonna come to River Borough and say, you have to bring that road up to specs, and it's gonna cost somebody a hundred bucks.
Is there any way that Tony and Stan raised very significant questions about public safety? And they wanted to ensure that they had access to that road if there was a need. So, is, is there a way that they can resolve, so they would have...
I was, I was never a fan of the idea of having gates. There's a, there's a main right out from your place that services the parish farm, and they have signs up saying private road. And I'm sure some vehicles go through there, but...
Not at all.
Not at all. A private road means what the sign says, it's a private road, so if somebody's back there, then that's, that's a matter of law enforcement. So if there wasn't any gates, and like I said, emergency vehicles has to come back through there, and med ed, and the board company, I would think that, that's fine with me.
You could have a written agreement with them, protecting your own interest and also theirs.
No problem, no problem. I, I didn't wanna be behind the growing wall. I just wanted to have some kind of relief from the worry of the traffic, and like I said, the speeding and the, all the stuff that goes along. So, that was, that was my concern.
As I understand it, one time there was a one development right for farm, is that what the sign is right now?
Really, really offhand, I, I can't. I don't know.
Very, you don't?
I don't know. I'm not sure what goes to my grandfather's place, some's in River Borough, some's in the Tru-Sbury Borough, some's in the township. You toss your hat one way or the other, and I'm in a different tradition. I'm serious, I have to tell you.
How serious are you about putting your farm in permanent?
I, I would love to, I would love to, I don't know how far back on this, but we're still trying to do some, with that, because I don't wanna see that, that's too nice of a piece of ground.
It is, but you go, you go right to the top of their list, they have a fifty, farms are already applied.
Yeah.
In certain conditions, you have to be, to get a higher score.
Correct.
Development, way of development, quality of farm, she'd be, you would be very high on that list, but you haven't pursued it. You gotta have shown us your great enthusiasm for getting your farm reserved.
I, I, I have, I have most of it, but Pop still has some under his control, and that's where the holdup is at. So, but he's, he's not against the vacating of, of the roads. I, I just don't have the whole...
Control.
The whole parcel wall wrapped up at once.
How's your sister's got by all this? How's Maggie's got it?
No, she, she's been here with me different times, she's, she's lined it, as far as the, you know, trying to work and have this go through, so, but, that's pretty much, but while I'm up here, if we wanna just go back to a moment to Dyson Farm, and you said about the wildlife area and move once a year, when did they move? December first, or...
Depends on, on, depends on the wildlife flower management. There's a certain, there's a certain time that's optimal, the, it might be in March before they start to flower, or when they start to grow.
Right.
Could be the, as they bloom, I don't know, it depends on, there's a certain time that's ideal.
But when, when are they gonna establish it? That's, that's the other thing, I thought that was supposed to be established a year ago, and it's still...
When they grow.
No, when they're gonna establish this wildlife or flower plant.
I think I reported, uh, you were here last month, they had it until September of twenty, twenty or twenty-one, I forget, it's...
It's like two years, isn't it?
Yeah, they had two years, so I think, yeah, September of next year.
Okay.
Takes a lot of interest in establishing, obviously, takes a lot. We're holding bond money for that as well.
But then, I believe the other thing brought up by my sister was the fact that they have a move in, Adam and Doc Martin, where they said...
They moved the lot fifty-five, and I talked to Phil and Charlie this evening, and they're gonna come down, they told me it's probably two weeks or so, and they plan on removing all those filter socks and getting brush ball and everything down in there, kind of all that up, is what they told me this evening.
Okay, it's been a long time coming, but we're getting some progress. So, alright, I'm not sure we're wrapped, but that's pretty much my piece.
We appreciate your...
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have a motion, it was not seconded, right?
Well, there was a lot of discussion extending there, yeah. So if you wanted to make that motion again, the motion's still there.
I can repeat it, my motion was just that we...
Table and devil?
Abandon it. I just don't table, you know, I just think that abandon any further actions for vacating roads.
Your motion is to bring this particular request to a close.
Right, yes, but I, that's another way to put it.
And it raises a very valid question, and it's listed correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it doesn't stop anyone from coming next month and making the same request, or if the parties work things out, and they come back and say, you know what, we worked this out, and now we'll have mutual agreement, there's nothing to stop them from making future requests.
But for now, we're off the agenda.
Yes.
Alright, you have a second, discuss it, go.
Well, the big thing is, my concern is that we, we don't slam the door on the whole proposal, but at some point, if conditions change, parties can get back in and reopen it.
My concern, my concern is, if I'm thinking about the same road in the parish area, that's a stone driveway with a lot of washed-out holes and such.
No. It, it, it's not paved, it's, it's gravelized.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's a, it's stone, it's a stone gravel driveway with a lot of washed-out spots.
At times, John always makes, at times we've washed out a lot of water, a lot of fields.
Yeah, I, I've driven back there on... Yeah, I, I, I've driven back there, um, on one occasion, I actually stopped at the house. And that would lead to a more private drive without gates than what's being proposed here, because that road is in good condition. And if, if, if you put up a sign, signs only as good as people are gonna obey it, and I, I don't see how that's gonna change. Um, and I would imagine people are still gonna be using it, you know, one, they either don't realize that it's changed, how big's the sign, uh, or they don't care, they just let it go back and do whatever they're doing. So I, I don't think they're gonna get any difference unless it is gated or blocked in some manner, which is then gonna lead back to the same problems that we talked about before with, uh, emergency responders and things of that nature. Um, I, I think it is a worthwhile endeavor with good intentions, which is why it was brought in the first place. Um, because, you know, nobody wants people dumping stuff on their property or somebody else's property. Um, because, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, environmentally, and just, you know, the eyesore of it, and having to deal with it, whatever else. Um, but I just, I, I don't, I don't see how the current plan or proposal is gonna effectively stop it.
That was a long presentation.
It was.
Very well thought about.
Thank you.
Shall we vote? More comments?
I want to vote. Kevin, I think the ball's in your court. If you beat with Stan and, and Tony, and get, and get that worked out somehow, be with the property owners, it's gonna be affecting the long-term of the road, and everything worked out, so there's no real issues.
You still have a hundred cars every day.
They do, I'm not done yet, man.
I'm sorry.
Was that, was that every day?
Let me clarify, let me clarify the motion, the motion isn't doing any of that, the motion is just to say, we ended it here. I mean, that's what, that, we can't start again, but that's not saying it's, that's not part of going to Kevin and saying, you need to do this, you need to do that, we're just, we're just voting.
I, I think he's trying to give them hope for the future.
Well, as part of the discussion, you know, that's this part of discussions, is that, we said, we said, I'm trying to agree, that they can get back in at some point in time and make another attempt. So I'm saying, if you do get back in, you gotta have everything in line, you can't have a lot of loose hands. I'll support it, but if you have everything organized, you have to, if you, you know, so, and anybody in real, don't put it on the board and get everything in place for you, you have to do that yourself. I'm sorry.
Good, good point. Anybody else? Unless you vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I vote to the affirmative motion carries. All right, a little bit of new business. End-up maintenance contract, standard thing, we do every year.
Standard thing, uh, you walk across the street, this is Church Road, then TruSperry Township, then, uh, we receive ten thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars for that work.
I think emotionally, you're actually approving the contract.
Correct.
Okay, emotionally approve the contract with pen and pen.
Second.
Are we okay if they want it back by September third?
Yeah, we're fine.
Depending on, my guess is they move credit as well.
All right, well, uh... We're voting aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative motion carries. Twenty-twenty minimum municipal obligation.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, this is an annual thing every September, we're required, uh, under the, uh, the law, that we have to do, uh, what our minimal municipal obligation is for our pension, uh, for twenty-twenty, will be twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars. Um, so you're, you're really just voting to acknowledge that. Um, and again, typically, we receive, we receive a hundred percent of this, uh, in stating of that.
So several years in the road, but they've not been under the funding, which is...
Correct.
So just the motion is second to...
Make a motion, we accept, we're accepting the minimum obligation for motion.
I second it.
Motion is second, shall we vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I vote to the affirmative, that's approved, and then, um...
This has nothing to do with that, I just have a question about, um, the, uh, EDU sale that we approved before. Um, did, I, I, I didn't see it on the agenda, but did we wanna reissue a second bid for that, so that we can proceed in attempting to eliminate those? Um, and if so, do we wanna add that to the new business and take care of that?
We'll talk to Todd a little bit, and then Todd, to, um, our solicitor, a little bit about that, about depending on what we got in the biz, what would our likely next step be?
Second-class township code says that you're disposing of property, which is what we think this is, that, uh, you have to do that by a public bid, which we have done. If you can't dispose of assets that you have that way, and you bid it again, and you're still not disposed of it, then you are free of the restrictions of public bidding requirements to dispose of your property, and you can deal with it as much privately as you please, as long as you're acting in good faith.
So we need a second, uh, a, a second bid, uh, in order to proceed any further?
Aye.
I, I know I'm throwing this in there kind of at the last minute, but if we're doing it, I figured we wanna do it this month, so that we can continue.
Well, do, I mean, is there an advantage to spacing out those options, is the other question, by a couple of months?
There may be, I, I haven't explored it thoroughly.
December and advertise it, I, I don't know.
What was that?
If we wait and advertise it again in a couple of months, I mean, I don't know if there's gonna be advantage to doing that or not, as opposed to doing it and then running away. I mean, we're not in a burning rush.
There's probably a disadvantage.
To do this.
I, I'd say we're, we're not in a rush, but we also wanna not have them anymore. So...
All right, good, good point.
I mean, the, the market may change by that point, I think is what you're saying, there may be a need for them, at, at that point, there may, there may be more interest.
Right. Makes a good point, there's nothing, there's no time limit.
There's no timeframe, it says it has to be the next.
Okay.
But, but there's no timeframe, so it doesn't say, you know, whether two years is too long, but that's just property is.
Right.
Right, I'm thinking in a few months or something, we re-advertise it.
I think there's a lot of merit to what Supervisor Advisor says, all takes is a little buyer.
Good point.
And apparently you don't have it this month.
Right.
All right, I apologize for the...
No, no, I think it was...
Also maybe we advertise them again in the spring or something, if you were back in the mindset of building and buying.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure...
I just put a reminder.
I wish I knew a couple of projects that are in the works, that they're not gonna take a break there with what you're... Okay. I will leave it in staff's capable hands. I'll, I'll get the others. Okay.
Okay, no, we did all that, but it was, uh, important to see that, I probably should have, because, um, Kinsley did talk about that, so thanks for bringing that up.
We had a brief discussion, I mean, a lot was fresh in my mind.
All right, the, uh, getting closer to the request for qualifications, I know it's part of phase two of permits. And you're looking for approval to send this out.
This is the, uh, the matching grant?
Correct, we see in our, uh, because it involves federal dollars, and because our budget and our request included landscape architect fees, we need to do the request for qualifications.
Okay. And why January nineteenth, just curious, I'm not opposed, just curious, why is that your deadline?
Just so that we can get the project bid out in the spring months, and, and get an early construction contract.
I thought it was pretty well put together, pretty similar to something you've used in the past.
And, uh, in, in all practicality, you know, as I think about it, um, I actually wanna move that date up from January, actually make it sooner, because it, it doesn't take that long to get qualifications.
Not for somebody who qualifies.
No, um, we're...
We need to be...
I would say, um, you know, I'm gonna, if you give me the liberty of putting a date in, so that I have the information to you for the November meeting, I, I, I won't give you an exact October date right now, but I, I would like to pick a date in October, uh, that they have the qualifications back to us, so we can make a recommendation to November meeting.
I think that's, I mean, if you're getting them close to, close to thirty days.
I mean, for the most part, their qualifications, they're used on this all the time, and shall we say October fifteenth? In that case, uh, we will leave it open-ended. I make a motion that we approve this draft, um, with a date to be determined by our manager. Correct, a, a, a date to be determined in the month of October, in the year of our Lord, twenty nineteen. Um, and, um, go from there.
Right, second.
I second.
Thank you.
Shall we vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I vote to the affirmative, that motion passes. You have some, um, correspondence in there, um, we're very appreciative of you there. And if not, we can come to our, um, closing public comment, if there's anyone who desires to address the board, you have an opportunity now. Can't tell if Stan was shifting or making his way down.
I didn't have a report, so I was assuming you didn't have anything.
So if everybody...
I mean, it could have been something volunteer-related, so we do appreciate it.
Everybody's had an opportunity to speak.
In thirty seconds, if I may.
Yes.
I don't know where this came from, it's best in order, I knew there'd be adopted farm bill here, conservation, the first time in a long time, twenty-four million dollars. I don't know a little more closely than what is included in that, because just sitting here and looking, and I noticed that it includes, it's actually a package of fourteen different bills, and they have adopted them all, twenty-four million dollars. Half a million dollars to, uh, re-establish low-interest loan program for implementation of best management practices in agricultural areas. We should like that, Mr. Sun, and so, uh...
Some rough and brain-related issues.
Three million dollars annually increase to the weak tax credits, resource enhancement, and protection tax credits. Same thing, right, for private farmers or other property owners to put in those kinds of DNP's. There's one more thing here, proposes to amend the Ag Security Area Act to allow for subdivision of preserved farms.
What?
I don't know what the heck that means.
I don't.
How does that, too? Those language, you, you don't see that in this already hot one website.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that in there.
And then there was another act in there I saw somewhere, that, that hasn't been adopted yet, but it would waive the requirement of sprinklers and other UCC safely, safety requirements for barns that are being used as wedding facilities.
Oh.
Right, to make it easier for people to utilize their barns, by, you can have a lot of people there and not have sprinklers, instead you would just have fire extinguishers and smoke detectors. That hasn't been passed yet, not a law for the farmer, but that doesn't sound like a very good idea.
It's a whole new bill.
Well, a, a lot of farms wouldn't be able to do something like that based on zoning, I would think, because that'd be a commercial use, wouldn't it? Yes, but there are places that allow it.
By special exception, and...
Right, so then you use it, but then you gotta get over the fact that you're gonna have seventy people in a barn, and that's a UCC use, you've got it. So there's a lot going on in there, I'm gonna look into it and let you know at least what's going on when they try to provide these sort of farms, that's...
Thank you.
That's news.
There are a lot of...
It could be a wolf in sheep's clothing, possibly.
What's, what's the part of this?
I'm sorry?
What's the likelihood that this will pass?
Oh, that's fast.
Parts of, parts of it already have it, not, not all of it.
Yeah.
What's in this article that's passed?
You're right, farm bill, fourteen acts, twenty-four million dollars, that's passed.
Yeah, this...
There's always other stuff in this there.
But there's some other pieces that aren't, like the services they could take on, so thank you for that update. All right, anything else for the good of the order here, I should be not making long to do a German. I'm in favor of a German.
It's a somewhat ridiculous, very technical motion.
Thank you all for coming out.